Hi, I'm Sandy Street Potter with the League of Women Voters of Muscatine County. And with me today is Clint Christopher, the Superintendent of Muscatine Schools. He's here to talk with us about the revenue purpose statement that will be on the ballot this year. Welcome.
Well, thank you, and thanks for having me. So the revenue purpose statement, this is a renewal of the revenue purpose statement that really is not a tax. It's not an additional tax. It doesn't impact any property taxes. Essentially, the state legislature many years ago approved a 1% sales tax on all sales tax throughout the state of Iowa. And so those funds are collected and then distributed on a per pupil basis for each of our school districts throughout the state. And one of the requirements of that legislation when it was originally passed was to have a revenue purpose statement, which is simply, how are we going to spend these funds? And the funds can only be spent on, now really, the bulk of it is spent on facilities. So any kind of additions or renovations, it can be demolition, it can be purchasing land, it can also be used for infrastructure, technology, school safety, all of those kind of, you know, physical improvements to any of our buildings throughout the district. That's how we have to spend the money, and that's how we have spent the money. As you've looked at different additions we've done at the high school with our new STEM Center, our student center, we have a number of construction projects that are happening now that that's, we use those dollars to fund those projects. So the original legislation was approved through 2030, and so the original revenue purpose statement was extended through 2030. Then the legislature went back and extended that, those sales tax dollars are guaranteeing that revenue through 2050. So we have to just renew that revenue purpose statement from the 2030 now out to the 2050.
Okay.
And so it'll be on the ballot for this November. And again, it's the exact same language as what was approved the first time. And again, we can only use those funds for facility or infrastructure improvements.
Infrastructure, sounds good.
Yeah.
You have done some wonderful things with our infrastructure, with our school system. Anything else would you like to, are there any other questions?
So again, we just want to make sure we have information out there, and we're happy to answer questions at any time. But again, I think it's just important to reiterate that it isn't a tax increase, that if it didn't pass, it kind of, there are certain things we can spend the money on, but at some point we'll have to get it extended out through 2050.
Okay.
So, but it is an important revenue source for us in order to improve and maintain our facilities throughout the district.
Okay.
The purpose of the school board is to provide oversight and governance for a school district and its schools. Its responsibilities include developing a system of accountability and setting the district's direction, ensuring the district's central administration staff pursues its stated goals, controlling the district's funds, and soliciting the support of the community, providing excellence in education and services to students.
I'm now with Karen Cooney, who is on the school board, and she's running for reelection. Hi Karen.
Hi Sandy.
How are you today?
I'm pretty good.
Got some questions for you.
All right.
Tell us about you as a candidate for the school board.
That is a journey, is what that is, is because I spent 32 years working for HUD Housing with low-income families who normally had then the problems with education. And it came apparent to me that more needed to be done. And so after I retired, I ended up becoming a substitute teacher. And then after that, when the school board opened up, I went, okay, then this is where I need to be. And so it's been four years now, and I've enjoyed my journey so far.
Cool. Okay, then what are your top three priorities for the school district?
Oh, I could tell you right off the top of my head, the easy one is bullying. That is a major, major issue now. It's a toxic environment compared to what it used to ever be. There's always been bullying, but it's been very much a toxic environment. And there has to be a way to figure out how to know why these kids are being the bullies. You know, it's not just that we need to help the kids that are being bullied, you know, because they need a lot of different help, a lot of different help. But the kids that are doing the bullying, why are they doing that? There has to be something. Is there something at home, other things that they, maybe they were bullied themselves? And so the culture has really come very toxic. And we even start seeing it somewhat, unfortunately, with some of the teachers feel like they're getting bullied.
Wow.
And yeah, and so it becomes a, almost like it's just too easy to be able to do that. We do have our handbook where we just went over and did a lot of changes on that very topic. And so, but the problem is when people don't say it right away that they have been bullied, and then how long that that takes, you know, done with it. My second priority has to do with the schools themselves and the length of the schools and such like that. Third is communication.
That's good. So then, what are the two to three strengths which our district can be proud of? What do you see as strengths?
The strengths are, it's amazing, the coordination that we have had with the schools when we've gone through a lot of changes, and a lot of changes not even before even COVID hit, but afterwards and because of, and then what, how we came out of that, as well as what the government gave us for special monies and wish to do some improvements, finding out what we can take and help these kids with. But that money's going to be going away at the end of this year, so that's going to make that harder. But part of our strength with that is, okay, we know kind of like what we think that's going to work in that. So now it's just the challenge is how we find the monies and stuff and wish to be able to do that. So that is the main one. And then from there, I'm very proud of what we have for our buildings and grounds and facilities. It's totally amazing, you know, with how that goes. And then, of course, you can't say anything except for good for with the teachers and the staff in itself.
Yes, we do have a wonderful staff.
We do, we do.
We really do. We do. Okay, how can you, as a school board member, ensure that students in the Muscatine Community School District are prepared for success in school and life?
Oh, that's a good one, because we just started here, last couple of years, a thing called Portrait of a Graduate. And yes, and it's really a wonderful situation where we're helping kids because there are kids that are actually graduating with college credit before they get to college, because they're able to come out to MCC and take a bunch of them, and then they're going back with the classes they need to, and then their sports and everything, the arts and everything else that they do. So they've become a really rounded individual. And we've had kids that have graduated with like 30, 40 credits already for college.
Wow.
So yeah, yeah.
That's awesome.
So we are really trying our hardest to be able to find those avenues, but it also has to deal with absenteeism and what happens, because if they're not there, they're not going to get that chance to get the education like they should.
Wow, that's cool. Okay, are you affiliated with any specific group? If you are, what's the name of the group? And how do you, as a candidate, differ from the agenda of that group?
I am affiliated with Friends of the Art Center Board. I am on that, and to me, that has been part of my passion throughout the years, working with anything with the arts. My daughter actually works at the art center, so it has been a blessing to be able to have that so that I can help out with funding, you know, finding places to do, you know, with that. And I'm also affiliated with theater. I've done a lot of theater work, probably closer to 40 years, you know, with taking and doing different things.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So I've directed all the way down to just doing all backstage, everything, acting. And so it's been a fun and a blessing and an outlet for my life. So when I see the kids, students today taking advantage, I mean, Renee Mock is doing a wonderful job with that theater department, helping those kids, because what they get for when they're on stage and everything is going to help them when they go on to life. And so those are the two areas in question that I feel most with is with the arts, which arts is theater.
Exactly. That's pretty cool. Okay, and how would you get parents involved in their child's school?
That is, on one hand, you think that can and could or should be easy, but it's not necessarily that easy, because you're not just with parents, sometimes you have grandparents that are helping out and others in any type of given situation. So we try to be able to include guardians and such when we're looking at different things for the kids. We do have a policy in the handbook that talks about, the reason you even have a handbook is for the few that have the problem, you know, and so you have to make sure you have it all down. And there's some good conduct for all the sports and the arts people and everything. And those people, they want to be able to make sure they're being good, because they want to be able to continue with their sports and stuff. It's the kids that don't do, then what are they doing and why do they want to be in school and stuff? And then the parent trying to do. We've even had parents say, how can you help me make my kid go to school? And it's because they're not being engaged. So it's coming up with, how do we help the parents? It's not us telling them what to do per se, it's how do we help the parents become, you know, involved with it? And it takes, it takes more than one, because they have more than one teacher by the time they get to high school. So it's what are they doing to be able to make sure that they're happy with their classes? And if not, what's going on and such? Because just one teacher alone can make a difference.
I agree with that. I totally agree with that. Now, are you, please make your closing remarks.
Oh, I can easily do that. Basically, I'd like to think about with your help that I want to be able to support the students, but of course, with doing that, we have to support the teachers, the administration, and the supportive staff, because all of that, as I just said, is a collectiveness and wish to be able to do. And I hear at each school that staff feels like they're family, and that's important to be part of a family. And if you are, then you know you want to talk about the good things, but also when there's not good things happening, you need to be able to talk that. So with that, that means communication is a key. It's a key in business, and in a manner of speaking, the school is a business, nonprofit business, and it also as well as with a family. So with that, if you have any questions, I want you to feel free to be able to give me a call. I would love to be able to talk to anybody further about any, not only the subjects that you talked to me today, but any others that they may have.
Okay.
And just remember that, I said this four years ago, knowledge is power. If you have the knowledge to do something, it powers you to be able to go forward. And then also, because of the bullying situations and stuff, words do matter.
Words matter.
So I appreciate the time and energy and everything that the league has put in to make this happen for us today, Sandy.
Well, thank you. Oh, I'm with Denny Schur today. He's running for the school board, and I have some questions for him. Welcome, Denny, to the League of Women Voters, Muscatine County. Tell us about you as a candidate for the school board.
Well, again, my name is Denny Schur, or Dennis Schur will be on the ballot. I taught school here for 26, 29 years. I was a softball coach for 26 years. I have been on the school board for the last four years, and my term is up now, so I'm running for reelection. And I think that we've done some great things in the school district these four years, and I'd like to continue with that.
Okay. What are your top three priorities for the school district?
Well, number one obviously is to have student success. I would say we want our school and our students to be successful after graduation. Number two for me would be that I think that our facilities need upgrade, and we are in the process of doing that for a lot of, a lot of our facilities are, you know, obviously we've built Jefferson brand-new, we're adding on to Jefferson. We are also adding on to a few other schools, like we did to McKinley. We're starting baseball softball complex. We are also adding on to Susan Clark, Madison, and Grant with our secure facilities, secure entrances. And we are also adding on, you know, in the future to Susan Clark, adding on another gym for phys ed and athletic purposes. Also, my third priority would be to encourage our staff, our teachers, non-certified and also certified, to be the best that they can be, and provide opportunities and policies so they can do that.
Thank you. Okay, what are the two or three strengths of which our district can be proud of? And why do you see these as strengths?
Well, I think that a strength, again, would be our increasing of our facilities. We are increasing those to attract, hopefully attract, families. Obviously, we have great businesses in our community, and the last statistic I saw, we had 11,000 families that lived outside of the district that worked here. So we'd like those families to relocate here. So I think attracting those families with our facilities would be great. Another strength, I think, that is we have career academies at the high school now that our students can go to, and either they're going to be college-bound or non-college-bound, and we can provide apprenticeships if they're non-college-bound. And so I think that's a great strength of ours.
Cool. How can you, as a school board member, ensure that students in the Muscatine Community School District are prepared for success in school and in life?
Well, I think that our teaching staff is very good, so that's one way, is that we have the, our staff that has the knowledge to increase our student successes. As I said before, we are, have Portrait of a Graduate for our high school kids, and also we have career academies for them also, so that way they can go into a field and prepare for college or non-college.
Are you affiliated with any specific group? If you are, what is the name of the group? And how do you, as a candidate, differ from the agenda of that group?
Well, I'm not really affiliated with any group. I have a coffee group, but that's just a bunch of, a bunch of guys that get together, talk about the issues of our city, and we have wide variety of people in that group. And so no, no political groups that I'm involved with, where I don't have any kind of agenda. I just want to make, make Muscatine High School or Muscatine Community Schools the best that we can possibly be.
Cool. Okay, how would you get parents involved in their child's school?
I would want to encourage them. It's, that's a tough situation, because some parents are very involved, some parents are not involved. I would just like to encourage them to continue to support their student and to have them be a success. I know that we have some connect class, connect situations at Susan Clark right now that, and we also have those at the elementary schools where the conferences and things are available for those, available for those parents to come in and to be involved in their education. And I think that any time a parent would want to volunteer for, to help out in the classroom, we encourage that also, and I would encourage them to do that also.
Well, thank you. Those are the questions I have for you today. Would you like to make your closing remarks?
Well, I think that being on the school board for the last four years has given me great insight into the educational process beyond being a teacher. My goal would be to allow each and every student to become a success, each and every staff member, non-certified and certified, and administration to become the best possible educator that they can be, and to create policy that would allow them to do that.
Thank you. I'm with Kim Schneider here today, and she's going to answer some questions about her running for the school board. Hi, Kim.
Hello.
My first question to you would be, tell us about you as a candidate for the school board.
Well, I am a lifetime resident of Muscatine, graduated from here. Three of my children went to school here, two graduated here, one from Wilton. I taught in the district for 31 years.
Wow.
Many positions, K through five in the classroom. I was interim counselor, and then I worked with at-risk and behavior students my last six or seven years, so kind of have a wide range of.
Wide range of experience. Okay. What are your top three priorities for the school district?
I would say my top three priorities are, we need to work on building relationships. I think there's opportunities to build better relationships with parents, between staff and the board office, just all the way around, kids, parents, everything. I think we just need to work on relationships. And with that, I would like to emphasize communication as a two-way street. I feel sometimes we have, we miss some opportunity to get, to get input from people with skin in the game, and I think that's important. I think we need to, and then I guess, so I guess that would be my first, is relationships. My second would be parent support. I feel like we need to provide some more parent support at a younger age for these students and the parents. And by support, I don't mean dictating to them what they should and shouldn't do, and how they should raise their children. Everybody's doing the best they can. But there are, through my job, I found there are many parents that would like support ideas, someone to help them when they have questions. And I think as a district, we should be providing a little bit more of that, and at an early age, so that it's a positive for the parents at the beginning. I mean, I raised my children, I had some negative experiences, my kids weren't perfect. You, you are going to have that, but if we can get their, get the parent support from the beginning, I think it is tremendous.
Yes.
And then the last thing I would say is, I think we need to get a little bit back to some basics and a little less top-down, and I lost my train of thought, back to basics and work on discipline a little bit more. We need some structure and routine, and maybe consistency across the board in the district.
Okay. What are the two to three strengths of which our district can be proud of? Why, and why do you see them as strengths?
One strength, I think, is we have a really good PR. We get our, we get things out there for the public to see, the positive things that are going on in the district. We have lots of opportunities for the public to come, you know, be involved in things. Another strength, I think, is the food program, helping, helping families in need, because this is obviously a tough time in our society, and the more we can do, the better. We're going to support our kids. We need to, you know, there's opportunities for some other things, but I think that is another strong point. And another strong point, I think, is that we, we have really strong administrators at the building level. Not that we don't anywhere else, but I think for the most part, we have some good administrators, and I think they have opportunities to grow within their buildings too. And I like the fact, I guess, I guess when I say administrator, I just mean some districts don't have administrators in every elementary building and counselors in every building, so I think those things are a positive.
Okay, all right. And how can you, as a school board member, ensure that students in the Muscatine Community School District are prepared for success in school and life?
Well, I'm sure that I have a lot to learn about what I can do as a school board member. I think I have some, I think I have a good perspective with having been in all the buildings except the high school, and I didn't teach in the high school, but I followed my students through. I graduated from there, and I've worked with many students after my students were out, my children are out. So I've been involved in all the buildings. I think that's a good perspective. I'm approachable, and I hope to take information, research, and do the best we can with it to make Muscatine a better, or not that it's bad, but make it a good place to raise your kids. There's things that I think we do really well, and there's some things I think we could work on, like with any organization. So I hope to investigate, be open, approachable, so that people can come tell me what, what they want and what they feel is important, and then I hope to research it and help make the best decisions we can.
Cool. Okay, are you affiliated with any specific group? If you are, what's the name of the group? And how do you, as a candidate, differ from the agenda of that group?
I am not affiliated with any group. It's a one-man campaign. Well, my daughter's helping me too, but no, I'm not affiliated with any group. I mean, I'm probably a conservative person, but no, I stand for what I think is best for kids, doesn't matter. I mean, there's going to be policies and stuff that come down from above. Obviously, we have to follow those policies. I feel pretty strongly that I'm approachable from any group. I don't, I don't want to be connected with any specific group, because I think that deters other groups, I guess. So, and I'm, I'm not, so.
Okay, cool. Well, how would you get parents involved in their child's school?
Well, like I said, I think we need to start maybe even at the, at the Milk Center. I was on the Muscatine County Extension Board for four years, and they have some really good programs to involve parents and parent training and parent success. And I know they've talked to the school district, and I hope to stay involved with that part of the program. But I think getting those parents on board at an early age, sometimes parents have a nasty taste in their mouth because of their experience at school, or one of their older students, or a family member. And I think we need to listen, it needs to be two-way communication, but, and we need to support them. But I also think there's a fine line between supporting them and letting them make decisions that aren't best for their kids and trying to come in and change things at schools. I'm not sure I'm saying this correctly, but you know, I just, I don't think we can give parents too much control. They're ultimately the last, the last safe for their child. But I also think parents need to know where the rules are and what the expectations are, and that every, there's consequences for every decision you make in life, and parents and kids might as well learn that right away.
So true. That is so true. Well, that's all of my questions, so what are, what would your closing remarks be?
Wow, that went quick.
It did.
Well, I guess I would like to let people know that I feel like I'm an honest person, maybe too honest sometimes. Transparency, I feel, is important in the district. Like relationships, we've got to work on relationships between paras, custodial, every aspect of the district needs to feel as if they are an important cog in the wheel, you know? I mean, we, everybody has skin in the game, but I don't feel like maybe everybody is hurt, and there's opportunities to maybe get more input from people that do the day-to-day grind thing. I'm not afraid to ask the tough questions. I'm not afraid to investigate. I hope to be very approachable from parents and employees, and kids, actually. I sub in the district, so I kind of get in and out of buildings a little bit that way. That's, that's a positive, because I kind of see what's going on. I just feel like there's some things maybe Muscatine Community Schools have migrated away from, and we maybe could work on those opportunities to make it an even better place to be.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm now with John DeBeet, who is running for the school board. I have some questions for you today, Mr. DeBeet. Tell us about you as a candidate for the school board.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to start by thanking the League of Women for organizing this and for the opportunity. My name is John DeBeet. I'm a full professor here at Muscatine Community College. I teach economics and statistics, and also coordinate the business department. I'm married, my wife is Abir, and I, we have twin boys, Nabil and Anton, who are 14 years old and starting this year their freshman year at the high school. So, so that's something that I would like to share with everybody. Obviously, I'm currently the school board president, and also I do believe in supporting education whenever I can. I have been in education all my life, it became a career for me. So these are things that I would like everybody to know about me.
Thank you. What are your top three priorities for the school district?
Well, obviously, I do have way more than three, but if I'm thinking about the most important issues, number one, creating a safe environment for all, and I mean it, for all means for students, for teachers, for staff, for administration. That's a very important priority for me. Creating a quality education and supporting a quality education system here in our school district in Muscatine is also a top priority for me. That's very important. But also, I spoke about that before, and I continue to promote this idea. We want our students to be ready, to be ready for college, for university, but also to be ready for. be ready for the market. And everything is changing very fast right now, especially with the AI, and we need to make sure that they are ready when they graduate from the high schools. So those are definitely my top three priorities.
Okay. What are two to three strengths of which our district can be proud of?
Well, a district of our size can be very proud of all the expansion, all the projects right now, or let's say, in the past year, all the way till now into next year. We're spending around $27 million on expansion. So, so you know, a district of our size, this is unheard of, maybe unusual, but we're extremely proud that we're doing this. We want our students to have the best system, to have the best of everything, so that they can really concentrate on education and become also best students, at least if I can say that, in the state of Iowa.
Wow, okay. How can you, as a school board member, ensure that students in the Muscatine Community School District are prepared for success in school and life?
Well, well, that's a great question. I mean, we try our best. We look at test results. We discuss that with the superintendent, with the, with principals, with the administration. We talk to teachers. We, and that's very important. We need that feedback. We need to know what we, as a school board, can do to make it happen, and that's very important. So I would say, again, providing our students with a quality teaching is a must for us, and that will help us to achieve this goal, of course. I'm extremely proud of all the teachers that we have in our district. They are doing everything and every possible thing in the best way ever that anyone can imagine in order for our students to succeed.
Okay. Are you affiliated with any specific group? If you are, what is the name of the group? And how do you, as a candidate, differ from the agenda of that group?
Well, I, I wear different hats. Obviously, I, as I said, I'm with the school board already, and it's basically, I always say, it's an honor, and it's a privilege to serve Muscatine School District. But you know, I'm well-involved with Sister Cities Movement. Locally, I'm the president of this organization, but also, I'm elected also officially to serve on the board in Washington DC. And so I represent Iowa, I represent Muscatine, but also, I represent the movement nationwide and on the international stage. I'm extremely proud of that, because a major component of this organization is education, which is something that I can relate to.
Wow, that's cool. Well, how would you get parents involved in their child's school?
Well, I encourage parents to take a very active role in their kids' education, in their school's life, because again, you know, I can, I can talk as a parent also. I mean, I want to make sure that our kids are studying, have the environment to succeed and shine, but also, I want to be there when one of my sons is playing basketball and his, at his game, or when one of my sons is playing with the orchestra. So I encourage all parents to take a very active role and part of their kids' life. Once you start seeing your kids shining, this is something to be always proud of. So I, I think, if I may say that, there's nothing, 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 much better than investing in our kids' education.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Would you like to make your closing remarks?
Yes, if I may. Again, I would like to thank the League of Women voters for the opportunity. I also would like to take the opportunity to thank every teacher in our district, especially, yesterday was the World Teachers Day. And as teachers all over the world celebrated that, we want our teachers here in Muscatine to take part of that. So thank you for everything you do, and we are very proud of that. I would like to say, in terms of my run for the school board, I would say, if, if you want quality education, I ask for your vote. Please vote for John DeBeet. If you, if you want safe learning environment, I ask for your vote. Please vote for John DeBeet. If you want to, want us to invest in your students' education, please vote for John DeBeet also. Remember, education is key, and that is a very important thing. So I respectfully ask for your vote on November 7th and/or before, if you choose to go and vote early. And with that, I would say, go Muskies.
Speaking with Matt Miller, who's running for the Muscatine Community School District School Board. Welcome, Matt.
Hi, thanks for having me.
I have a couple of questions for you here. Tell us about you as a candidate for the school board.
Sure, as a candidate for the school board, I am looking to, really have been an advocate for our community for about two years here. I've been with the community for 45 years, but just in the last couple of years, just some things have kind of hit my feelers a little bit, and I've really just tried to advocate for our students and staff, also some of the administration even. But the biggest thing that I want to do is just really make sure that our, our positive sides of our schools are being shown. We do have negative things that go on, and it's really easy to focus on that negative. Unfortunately, I think the positive gets pushed aside. So I really want to bring those positives to the forefront. I also think it's important that, you know, we need to understand, on a school board, when we're approving certain topics, what are we approving? Where's the money going? And how are we spending that money? And I think that's a concern that's been raised up even in the, just the last couple of weeks, that I've seen, and in the last school board meetings, that we need to just make sure we're really holding also our community tax money to what is being spent for, and are we using it correctly.
Okay, that's cool. Okay, what are your top three priorities for the school district?
Sure. Top three priorities. So first and foremost is that we need to be raising productive members of society. And by doing that, we need to be using our interns that we have and the programs that are offered through the school with jobs and employers, and getting them into those, and really bring that focus into the community, so they know those are out there, because we do know it as some parents, but not everybody has that access. I think that brings into the second problem that I see, that I would like to work on, and that's our IEPs and 504s. So we need to really get down deeper into that. Some of us, again, who, if I have a cell phone or a computer, I'm able to have access to, all access to how I get to those forms, and IEPs and 504s, and who my people are to get to. Not everybody in our community has that. So how are we getting that information out to them? And even more, how are we helping those kids get through the system so that we are working with them better off? I think that falls into the third, which is, we talk so much, and we hear so many things about behavioral kids in our schools, and this 5% that keeps continuing to manage our school, or run it, and we worry about that 5%. We need to look at that 5% differently, and we need to say, what can we do to grow them and make them productive in our community? If I have a student or a child in school that's really good in math, and maybe isn't proficient in reading, but is very good in math, we need to direct those skills around where they are good, so that they can go out and be strong members in our community. So if I'm in math, let's put them into financing, let's put them into accounting, let's get them into those things where they're good with the numbers, and let the kid work for us.
Wow, that's good. Okay, what are the two to three strengths which our district can be proud of? And why do you see these as strengths?
Sure. So two to three strengths that our district is proud of. I think we should be very proud that we have the Muscatine Community School District as a whole. We have a public, we have a public here that's really big into, into our schools and putting effort into it, and we have a superintendent that's actually willing to work side-by-side with the community, if the community comes side-by-side with him to talk. If we don't allow that to happen, then we have a struggle. And so many times, we want to go to social media and throw our actions out and say everything, but we don't really come back with the root cause or a solution to that. So our superintendent is sitting there, ready to do that for us, and I think that's key. I think that our school district also has, maybe it doesn't seem like a positive, but we have this supply and demand in this community now, that's going to challenge our school to become even better in the public school district. We now have a Muscatine Christian Academy. We have St. Mary Mathis. We have three schools that our kids can attend. We have plenty of opportunities for these kids in our public schools, and need to keep pushing that. I'm not saying anything against the other two schools. They're great, and I, and I love them both. We need to step up in public schools, and we do that well. And we do that well through many of the teachers and staff that we have. The other things, I think you said three, or do you want?
Two or three.
Two or three? Well, then I think we can stop there.
All right, all right. Then how can you, as a school board member, ensure that the students in the Muscatine Community School District are prepared for success in school and life?
So again, I think that does kind of go back to the question that you had earlier. And I'm going to push really hard on those companies that are working with our schools and with our counselors in the schools, to make sure that if we have someone who wants to get in construction, they're able to go out and get into an electrical field while they're in school. We have kids in high school now with the programs that are set up different than when I was there and you were there, that can graduate our school with credits already to college, almost a year in. Those are key things that need to be, keep driving our students. That's how we progress these kids. That's how they become productive members of society. Those are the focuses we need to be putting all this on.
Wow. Okay, are you affiliated with any specific group? If you are, what's the name of the group? And how do you, as a candidate, differ from the agenda of that group?
Am I affiliated with any certain group? Well, I'm affiliated with a lot of groups. I like to duck, huh? So I'm Delta Waterfowl, right? It's a group, right?
There you go.
I like to, I like, we foster dogs.
There you go.
So I like to help with that, and it takes a village, and do those things. So those are groups. How do I differ from them? Not much. If I'm part of a group, I don't always agree with everything that everybody has in that group, but I think that's what's good about us, is that what drives our progress, is we need to challenge each other and have that constructive criticism, whether it's in a group, or no matter what the setting is.
Good answer. Okay, how would you get parents involved in their child's school?
I think that's the biggest thing that we have to work on this year, and the next couple of years. Being a parent, and knowing what I went through the last two years, and kind of how my feelings got hurt back in the day, so that's why I started talking out and being avid here. We have to really bring parents' involvement to the forefront. If they're going to complain on social media, we need to get, get out to the school board meetings, contact your school board members, reach out to the superintendent. Everybody and every one of them has said, "We're here for you. Let's talk." Go get a coffee. If they're not responding to you, reach out to the superintendent and follow up with what you need to do. But we, as a school board, or as a community as a whole, parents need to be involved. The school is not there to parent our kids. The true thing that a school education system is, is to educate our children to become productive members of society. And once that happens, the school has done their part. They are not there to raise them, and that somewhat is the problem with our schools today.
Okay. Well, those are all the questions I have for you. Would you like to make your closing remarks?
You know what? So my closing remark is, I've been a member of this community for 45 years. I love Muscatine. I am drawn to it. There's so many good positives that Muscatine has, and unfortunately, do focus on the negatives. And my overall goal is get the negatives out of here, and let's bring the positives to the forefront. We need to see Muscatine for what it is, and stop seeing it for the bad stuff that really is minimal in the big scheme of things. But everybody likes to kind of bash on it, and I just want to make a difference and say, "No, we're here to bring positives. Let's grow our kids. Let's work as a staff. Let's work as administration, and let's make sure these kids are growing up and getting the right tools." And I think those things are there. We just need to pursue them a little bit harder.
Okay, thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you.
Best wishes for your.
I appreciate it.
I'm with Keith Gray right now, who's running to become a member of the Muscatine Community School District School Board. Welcome, Keith.
Hello.
I have a couple of questions for you here today.
Sure thing.
Tell us about you as a candidate for the school board.
Yep, no problem. Keith Gray, been married for 27 years to my wife, Malia. She is a educator, substitute teacher in the school district. She was a parent educator for a while. I work for John Deere. I've been with John Deere for 23 years, and I'm an engineering operations manager for the Combine Engineering Development. So I manage the facilities. I also have, in my organization, 160 skilled trade technicians, engineering technicians that are a union workforce, and they're fantastic. We've got six children, and we moved here in January of 2012, when my daughter was, my oldest daughter was in her, halfway through her eighth grade year. So she finished at Central, and then went on to MHS, graduated in 2016. And then my other three have graduated, Jason, Logan, and Megan, and I've got two right now in the high school. One's a senior, Kayden, and Brenna is a sophomore. So been very involved with the schools. All of my sons played most of the sports. My daughter's the swim team, and then we're very involved with drama, orchestra, choir. My wife is the current president of the Choral Boosters and is on the drama board. We're both involved with the River City Show Choir, so yeah, just, we're very involved with the school, and got lots of friends that are teachers, and just really, as I've talked to them, that's about their concerns, that's why I'm running.
Cool. Well, what are your top three priorities for the school district?
Great question. Top three priorities. First of all, we've got to give a vision to our kids of what they can do and can become. We also have to help our parents. I think there's a lot of frustration with parents of exactly what their kids can do and should be doing in the schools, and helping both the parents and the kids find their path. Not everyone is going to go to college, which is great. You know, like I said, I work with a lot of skilled technicians. Industrial programs are fantastic. Skills-based programs are great. And helping our kids find what they're passionate about is, is our priority. I think the school board really needs to help focus on that. Also, how do we support our teachers? As I've talked to a lot of my teacher friends, and my wife has talked to them, there's a lot of frustration. They just don't feel supported by the board, or by the school district, the administration. And so helping them feel more supported is, is going to be one of my priorities. And then third, just listening to people. I think making sure that we understand people's concerns and working with people. I'm a problem solver. I like to talk to people and come up with creative solutions.
Wow. What are the two or three strengths of which our district can be proud of? And why do you see these as strengths?
Two or three top strengths. I think number one, we do have a fantastic foundation in our schools. We have great teachers. We have a lot of teachers that care and really want to make a difference in the students' lives. We also just have a great community from which to draw these students in and to help them. We also just have a lot of great programs. Like I said, we're, we've been very involved. The sports programs are fantastic, but the theater department, drama department, the music department is just fantastic, and provide, it's provided our children with many wonderful opportunities, enriching experiences. Two of my kids went to China with the show choir program. So there's just a lot of neat opportunities that we have, and opportunities that you can't get at a bigger school. When we were considering moving to the Quad Cities, we looked in the Quad Cities, but we really felt Muscatine was going to provide our kids with plenty of opportunities to get involved, and that's one of the great strengths of, of our school district.
Wow, that's cool. Okay, how can you, as a school board member, ensure that the students in the Muscatine Community School District are prepared for success in school and life?
That's a great question. Again, I said before, we have to provide a vision for, for our students and the parents. They have to understand what the opportunities are. They have to know that there's industrial tech programs, skilled trades programs, but there's also, we need to be providing entrepreneur opportunities to these kids, teaching them finances, teaching them how to manage life. They're going to be entering, entering life after high school, and they need to understand what are those opportunities. It's not always college. College is fantastic, very much an advocate of it, but we also need to provide those opportunities. And I think just a lot of parents are just discouraged, because they don't know what are the various avenues that, that they can send their kids. The kids oftentimes are frustrated with traditional school as well, so how do we help tailor our schools so that, in our teachings, to help these kids have a vision for what they can become in the future?
Are you affiliated with any specific group? If you are, what's the name of the group? And how do you, as a candidate, differ from the agenda of that group?
Oh, boy. I've recently become affiliated with Sleep in Heavenly Peace. It's a charity here in town. They started up this past summer, and I, my wife and I have been working with them since the very beginning, back in July timeframe. We build beds, and then we deliver beds to kids. The slogan is, "No Kid Sleeps on our, on the floor in our town." It's a fantastic organization. We've delivered, I think my wife and I We've delivered, I think my wife and I personally have delivered about 20 different beds, and we've built, I don't know, 60, 70 beds. How I differ, I don't know. We're all pretty like-minded. We enjoy serving and being part of the community and giving back to our community. So no, I'm any different than any of them.
Wow. How would you get parents involved in their child's school?
Oh, I think that, that is the fundamental question. First of all, you have to be open to listening, and you have to be open to talking to them. You also have to be patient. There's going to be many times when parents express ideas and opinions that are different than yours. And as a board, I think we have to ensure that parents know that we don't have all the answers, that we need input. And then through logically talking through solutions and solving problems, hopefully we can get them more involved. Again, also giving parents a vision of what they can do and what their opportunities are and how they can become involved, I think, is also critical from a board standpoint.
Well, that's all the questions I have for you today. So would you like to make some closing remarks?
Sure. I'd be grateful to you. First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and talk today. You know, I'm very passionate about education. Education has always been very important to me. I come from a family of educators. Both my grandparents were college professors. I've got uncles that are professors and just have always been, education is always key. I do think that as a school board, we need to do all that we can to support our students and our parents. We need to do what we can to support our teachers, keep the administration accountable. It's good administration. There's lots of good things going on. But also, as I've talked to teachers and parents, there's a lot of growing concern and frustration. And, you know, two of the incumbents have been on the board for four years, and Mr. DeBeet's been on there for eight years, and I think they've had opportunities to address some of these growing concerns and frustrations. You know, one of the big frustrating things was COVID and how that was handled, voting to put kids in masks. And I think we have seen the detrimental effect of that. We're starting to reap some of those fruits right now. And I think if it wasn't for some of the newer members that were voted on two years ago, that they were actually poised to keep us in masks for even longer. So I think that's concerning, and just how do the, how does this board meet the growing concerns and frustrations of our parents, I think, is going to be key. Again, like I said, I am a problem solver at heart. I love to solve problems, love to get with people and work through issues and discuss options and opportunities and be creative in how we solve problems that we have. Again, there's a lot of great things that we have going on for us, but there are growing concerns, and we're in this together to try and solve solutions for our children, to help them become the best, most productive members of society as possible. So thank you.